Thank you. If everybody would take their seats and quiet in the chambers. City council meeting is now resuming at 10:11 PM. And I'd have to agree with a resident that I'd like the meetings to start earlier. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can I make a motion to take an ordinance out of order? There's a few residents here that are here for some particular ordinance that we're looking to withdraw tonight.
Want to amend the agenda?
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda? And...
Well, if you're withdrawing an ordinance that you wrote or put sponsored, you could just withdraw.
Okay. Well, can we withdraw ordinance 2017-42, which is the last one on the agenda?
Oh, why?
He's gone. He doesn't want to... He's withdrawn. He's taken it down. He's taken his application down.
It's done?
He's done. Yeah, he's done.
Withdrawn.
Withdraw means it's done.
If it wants to come back up, he's got to reapply.
It's done. He has to start the process all over again if he chooses.
He can do what he can, but he's got to start all over again.
It's the last ordinance, 2017-42.
The whole process will start all over again.
Okay, let's just clarify this. Councilman Baudier... Hold on. Councilman Baudier is withdrawing proposed ordinance 2017-42, an ordinance approving the rezoning of 2115 Hickory Avenue, the lots 31, 32, 33, and 295 Hickory Knoll subdivision, city of Harahan, parish of Jefferson, state of Louisiana, from R1 to C2 by request of Salvador M. and Fay N. Maroni dated May 2nd. It is withdrawn. In order for this to come back up, it would have to be...
Start the process.
Start the process all over again.
For the zoning?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Proposed?
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Yeah. Who's got ag though?
Give me two of these. Give me two.
No. Zip tie might be good.
Thank you so much.
She starts convulsing then they were taking...
Huh?
If you start convulsing then they were taking...
I know. But I'm not.
What's that? Madam Clerk? All right. Proposed ordinance number 2017-36 was... Which was deferred at the 12:21 meeting. We already voted on it. We did that one. Okay. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman Hewitt. This is an ordinance approving the re-subdivision of lot A2A, Soniat or Chapatulus Plantation subdivision, city of Harahan, parish of Jefferson, state of Louisiana, made by Ronald Clement PLS dated August 25th, 2017. I'd like to just reiterate that the zoning board did not recommend this re-subdivision. I believe it was by a 6 to 2 vote in November, November 2017. The public hearing is now open, and thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm Edward Sufferin. I'm with the Dwyer Cambry Law Firm in Matheri. We presented once before at the last council meeting. I represent the owner of the property, JW Colonial Group LLC. Our original proposal was to create six lots of record. After many discussions with council members, neighbors, the administration, and others, we've come up with an alternate proposal, still with six lots in design. Primarily, what we've done is to create a buffer lot along Colonial, which would have a dimension of 150 feet, which would be reserved for development. It also moved Lot 1, which is our primary focus here, to create a lot for sale to developer of the Blake, which is really a Cadillac assisted living facility, which would be a benefit and a complement to the city of Harahan. With that, we have also circulated today a revised re-subdivision plan, along with a proposed floor amendment, which we believe is in line with discussions among the various parties. And that would enable us to adopt that ordinance, have a substitute re-subdivision plan, all of which we believe complies with the law. You know, here, as I see things, this is a subdivision as of right. The applicant is not looking to seek a waiver, a variance, a special use permit, or anything of that nature. So what we're trying to do is just divide up this property for sale. We request your support. We have various representatives here, the owner, the Blake developer, our engineer, our zoning consultant. Everyone's available to you for any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Andy Arborow with Blake Management Group and the developer of the Blake at Colonial Club. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we consider to be positive benefits that we'd be bringing to the city of Harahan with our project. First and foremost, we'd be solving an exigent community need. The service that we provide, there's a lot of demand for in the area. We've had over a dozen unique inquiries already from local Harahan residents wanting to know when we'll get started, when we'll be open, when we'll be able to offer our services to them. Once open, we create over 70 local full-time jobs and, you know, hundreds of construction jobs throughout the development process. Once operational, our payroll at the Blake at Colonial Club, which is circulated to Harahan citizens who would work in our community, exceeds $2.5 million a year, which is circulated back into the local economy. We pay in excess of $180,000 a year in property taxes, once open and stabilized, based on...
What was the dollar amount you said in property tax?
Our estimate is around $180,000, realizing that that's divided among both parish and the city. But that's commensurate with, you know, using your millage and our building value estimates from other existing projects. And we'd serve as a catalyst for further professional types of uses and development in the area, which could create, you know, much-needed revenue for the city. So I just wanted to make those couple of economic development points to the council and ask for your support of our project.
Do you have that pro forma written up in order to provide, you know, with the taxes, et cetera?
Yeah, I have a multitude of...
If you would just...
You probably just took the calculation...
If you wouldn't mind sending it to me, and I'll be happy to forward it to the council or send it to everyone, that would be greatly appreciated.
I mean, yeah, those figures, I'm sure, are just an estimate, depending on what the property value...
No, it's a pro forma.
Right. So I mean, you know, it could be an undisclosed amount, depending on what the assessed value would be upon construction. So I mean, it's kind of hard. I mean, you know, he's just estimating figures, so...
We get it. Mr. Buddy?
I'm sorry. Hello. Tommy Buddy, 7208 Stoneley Drive, Harahan. I was on... I am on the planning and zoning board and voted against the rezoning request because I think there are numerous issues that need to be addressed. However, I firmly believe that it's in everybody's best interest, the residents of Harahan, the city of Harahan, and the owners of the property, and the developer who wants to build the assisted living facility. If the city exhibits some leadership and negotiates a clear clarity in the development agreement, the amendments the development agreement needs, I think it can be a win-win. I think the residents, the nearby residents, can look for improvements. The developer can reasonably develop the commercial property, and hopefully some, you know, a first-class residential neighborhood could take form. But it's going to take some leadership. So while I voted against it, I think it's time to work something out that improves the situation of the residents that are fearful of being fronted with commercial property, and gets the property into play, helps the developer. The $100,000 in property taxes, of which I guess we would get a third of that, is peanuts. There's 84 acres there. And it can be a first-class development. It could be English turn without a golf course. So there's a lot of win-win here. There are obstacles to overcome. We laid some of those out in a memo that went to the council, items to consider, and there are challenges, but they're just that. They're challenges, and reasonable people can come to a solution here where everybody improves their situation, everybody. So, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Johnson.
Hello. Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside. In some ways, I feel this ordinance is putting the cart before the horse. There is a development agreement. It seems to me, passage of this ordinance, in fact, even merely the requesting of this zoning change in the absence of a prior amendment of the development agreement contingent upon... The amendment contingent upon the passing of this ordinance would seem to breach the prior development agreements. So I think we're doing things in the wrong order. Second of all, this was such a contentious matter before. The new plan that was brought forward today, maybe...
I didn't start your time correctly.
It's all right. I'll be very short. I'm almost done. The new plan that he proposed today and the floor amendment, it may be great stuff. It may be something that everybody will want, but the citizens have not had the opportunity to look at that plan and review it. So I think we just need more time on this matter, so that the development agreement can be modified first, contingent upon count, and the change in the development agreement would be contingent upon council approving the ordinance for the re-subdividing. And then, in the same time, the citizens can review the new plat diagram that they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If there's no one else to address the council, we will now close to address the council. Council discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion if somebody can represent and can come up and converse with us on any questions we have.
And it may be a team effort, depending on the question.
Right. One of my questions, I presented to Mr. Jack a while ago, the drawing of the lots. You have Lot 3, which is supposed to take care of that buffer area, but the way it's written on the map right now is that it looks like, and it is going to be, a commercial part. When we discussed it, we discussed having a residential buffer in that area, and I want to see how we can go about doing Lot 3 to put it residential, where you have the buffer, et cetera.
And that really would require a commitment from the owner, and Mr. DeCody would speak to that.
Yes, as we discussed earlier, we think that it would be appropriate to have residential facing residential with Colonial. It makes sense. And we assume that we could take this two acres, which we convert to residential, and put it someplace else in the future, and I trust that we will work that out. And yes, I'll commit to making Lot 3 residential, and hopefully the council will place that someplace else in the front area.
Right. Taken away residential... I'm sorry. Taken commercial from you, it would only be right to give you in a different area.
And I'm going on, hopefully we can get that done.
Right.
City Attorney Bures. I think what Mr. Robert Johnson stated was on point and pretty eloquent. I was wondering about advertisement, transparency, amending to this extent, changing the lines, and also putting the cart before the horse.
My primary objective in reviewing anything that comes up with Colonial is to ensure that the city, if put into a posture where it has to litigate because someone has sued the city over whatever it is that Colonial does and the city agrees to with respect to this property, is something that's defensible in court. So that's how I view this. Is what... Whatever you do has to be something that the city attorney, me or somebody else, my successor, can defend in a court of law. So let's try to make sure that everything that we do is as by the numbers as we can do it. I was handed this amendment, these floor amendments, which nobody's yet offered. I was handed this when I got here tonight, and I went, well, this looks like the floor amendments that I prepared in conjunction with Mr. Sufferin for the last meeting. Wait, there's some extra language here. Then I looked at the plat. The plat is not what was before the City Planning Commission. This is a new subdivision of the commercial lot. Now, Mr. Sufferin, I just heard him. I took the words down because, you know, I wanted to make sure I got them right, so maybe he can correct me, but he said that the new Lot 3 would be, and I'm quoting him, I think, reserved for development. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Is that commercial development or is it residential development?
I clarified that.
Okay. So if there's going to be a clarification, and now this what this land presently is zone C1, if that's what you intend to do now, now we're in for a map change. We need a zoning change. So this...
Not necessarily.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's... Well, that is the opinion of the city attorney.
Residential is permitted and commercial under Harahan zoning law.
But that's not... You see, now, we go back to what Mr. Johnson quite correctly pointed out. What the city of Harahan has done with ordinance 1333, I believe is the number, is taken this parcel of property, these two big lots, and said they are bound by this agreement. And that agreement says you are going to do one commercial lot with 150,000 square foot building on it, and that's how we're going to do it. And if we want to amend this, well, we... Wait, wait. I'm just...
Well, don't mislead everyone.
I'm not misleading anyone.
Do I have it in my hand?
I've got the development agreement right in front of me.
Mr. Bures has the floor. But don't put out things that are not true.
I said, I believe that's what he... Let's see.
So if you're the city attorney, let's state facts, please.
It's two lots, and with the maximum of 170 total square footage allowed.
No, the commercial lot is one... The commercial lot, as it stands right now, is one lot of record.
You're referring to two phases, I think, city attorney.
No, I'm... I am referring to the commercial lot. That's all I'm talking about. The commercial lot right now is one lot of record. You can do... Yes, Mr. Sufferin, you could do... You said it's a subdivision as of right. Well, the city code defines administrative subdivisions, and then every other subdivision gets... That gets lumped in under chapter 86. So this is not an administrative re-subdivision. So this would have to be a subdivision under chapter 86, which requires submission to the City Planning Commission and then referral to the city council.
It's within the same 15 acres that are subdivided as commercial.
We just have a difference of legal opinion.
We have a zoning consultancy who wrote the book, if you'd like him to come up here.
Well, you know, I don't know who wrote the book, but I'm telling you who wrote the development agreement, and that was you and the former council. And that development agreement...
This plan complies with the development agreement.
This development agreement calls for certain things to be done on that lot. And if you want to change what gets done on that lot, including the re-subdivision of it, you have to come back to this council and do it... Well, the right way, in my opinion, would be to go back and do the entire chapter 86 procedure, which will take you months.
No, it'll take years. We've been working on this since February.
Everybody in this room is agreed that the Blake is something that we want to see happen. Everybody. It's a perfect fit for what's out there. I just want to make sure that when it gets done, it's done in a way that is defensible, so that if the city is sued, I don't have to explain to a judge some machination that I really don't believe in. I want to be able to stand in front of a judge and say, "The way we did it, Your Honor, we all worked out, and I'm going to put my license on the line and say, 'I think it sticks.'"
We're putting our licenses on the line and say, "It's correct. It is done correctly."
Mr. Bures, what are you afraid of? What lawsuit, if you don't mind?
Well, you know, this is how you... When you have something this contentious, you have to prepare yourself...
What's contentious? I don't see anybody making any... Because no one knew about it, wasn't advertised with all these changes. It's been on our agenda for six months.
No, ma'am. This has not been on your agenda. This has been on nobody's agenda.
It's the same plot of land, lines are moving. Let's really not exaggerate the situation.
No, let's see what it says.
Wait, I just want to say that I live on Colonial, and I have had neighbors knock on my door and ask me not to vote for this, and have told me, "If this gets passed, we're suing." I'm just saying.
Okay, and well, it's been re-subbed as C1, so we're not doing anything that is against the law, so...
His concerns are valid.
What other concerns? I didn't hear them.
That we're not doing things properly.
Well, I'll just read to you what the law says.
That this city would be sued.
I'll read to you what the law says. "No lot or parcel in a subdivision may be sold, transferred, agreed to be sold, negotiated to sell. No permit to erect, alter, repair, or any building upon the land in the subdivision may be issued, and no building may be erected in the subdivision unless a final plat has been approved as provided for herein," that's under chapter 86, "and introduced for final acceptance before the city council. Part of that procedure is sending it to the City Planning Commission, sending it to the city engineer within the time deadlines, getting everything in order, having the City Planning Commission make a recommendation, and then it comes to the city council." This was not before the City Planning Commission.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. This would be exactly what went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct, if the property owners and the team did not make concessions that certain city council members asked for. Is that true?
And the residents asked for it.
And residents surrounding the area.
That is correct.
They did not ask for this.
Excuse me. I'm speaking. So residents on the street that would be directly affected by the commercial property that is zoned commercial property...
Correct.
...three years ago, they asked for this change, and fellow council members sitting up here, and I wish you would speak up, so you can tell the public that you requested this change. Because if we didn't, and the team and the developers and the property owners did not make concessions to the surrounding residents and to council members sitting up here, we would be looking at the exact submission that went to planning and zoning. So we can revert back. That was advertised, it went to planning and zoning. It's for the council to approve or not approve, so we can certainly go back to that.
With the side lot setback of five feet.
Correct. Yes, sir.
The side lot setback for commercial property in a residential subdivision is five feet. We're setting back 150 feet, and we're going to put residences mirroring the ones across the street.
We have no confirmation of that, other than...
You don't? You want to save it in the book?
Steve?
I didn't finish, Mr. DeCody.
I'm sorry.
That quote, I think, the city attorney, if you would restate what the promise is that's not in writing.
You know, you can't buy $50,000 shack without putting it in writing in this state. You know, writing controls real estate transactions. And I got to tell you, Mr. DeCody, because we've talked, and we've had a cordial relationship...
And I still expect to have one.
I spent a good part of my vacation in the past two weeks working on amendments to the development agreement that I thought were consonant with what we had been talking about. And then today, I get this, which says nothing about a deed restriction on this land, so that you'll only put residential. By the way, your development agreement calls for a 75-foot setback along the entire length of Colonial Drive...
That is not correct.
Except for the commercial part. Except for the commercial part.
That is not correct either.
Yes, it is.
No, it is not. I'm not going to argue with you. I know what it says. It's relative to the 40 acres behind there. Not 75 feet on the commercial, and not 75 feet behind the 40 acres.
I know it's not on the commercial. I'm telling you that.
You just said it was the entire.
We are trying to cooperate and do what the community wants and get this thing built.
But now you're telling the city of Harahan that what you're going to do is put residential facing on Colonial. Am I hearing that correctly?
That's correct.
But that's not what the development agreement...
Nope. That development says on 40 acres, I can't have residential facing Colonial, not on the commercial, only on the 40 acres. Read the development agreement.
Yes, I know that, the 40 acres.
That's correct. That's not the 40.
So, but I'm trying to get what you're representing. So the residential facing will only be on this Lot 3?
That complies with the development agreement. That is correct.
Well, the development agreement says it's C1, but it doesn't say anything that restricts you to doing anything other than...
Whatever's available in C1 and residentially is, and I've agreed to do that and put residentially.
How are we going to manifest this agreement?
Because I just told Mr. Johnson that we would do it, and you can put it in the record.
I would propose to supplement the floor amendment to include that provision.
That's what I was planning. Yes, that's what I was planning.
Wait, I want to say something first. I was accused of asking for this. I asked for 75 feet all along Colonial from Jefferson Highway to where the ingress is to the former club. That's what I asked for. A resident who represented the residents that live in that portion met with some of your representatives. He asked for 75 feet. I don't know where the 150 comes from, but what you're doing with this 150 is continuing to keep those residents vulnerable, because you don't have to put houses. Yes, you can say, "Okay, I'm going to do residential."
Oh, I promise.
I promise.
Put it in the record.
But guess what? You come back two years from now and you say, "Hmm, I think I've changed my mind. I think I want to put commercial."
Are you doing tomorrow?
The city cannot stop you.
Sue. He just said we can make an amendment to the floor amendment to add...
To add the paragraph.
It's not where you do this.
It's not in law.
It has to do the agreement.
Councilor Baudy, didn't you speak to some of the residents that requested the 150 feet?
It wasn't even my idea. It actually came from the residents that were there, and then they changed their mind.
That was your idea. You have a bad memory, Tim. You have a bad memory.
I was actually out of town. It was Vegas. When I got back, I was informed that, "Hey, look, there are some residents requesting."
Tim, it was your idea. It was your idea. It was never brought up by anyone.
I'd like to make a motion to present this floor amendment to this ordinance.
This is too important... I'm going to have to speak. This is just too important to ram down everybody's throat, because you've got some backroom deal that you're doing. Mr. DeCody!
I don't have a backroom deal. Who's the backroom with?
Mr. DeCody, I'm going to tell you...
Who did I backroom with?
Wait, wait. Mr. DeCody, having this many amendments on this importance of a situation and piece of property in Harahan, without it being properly advertised, going back to planning and zoning the changes, and then on-the-fly amendments that we're seeing right now, and that we're supposed to take your word, get a little amendment, and we're all fine.
I'm putting amendment.
It's so improper. It is un...
It's legal.
It is not legal.
Okay, I just want to ask every member of this council why they think 150 feet is better than 75.
We already talked about this. We don't agree on it.
No, I'd just like to hear. I'd like you to tell the residents.
I've already told you why many times.
Well, can you say it again?
The depth of a residential lot in the subdivision is 75 by 150.
If the residents don't want it, if the residents want the green space, the 75 feet, why are you demanding 150?
It's to add property value to 40 people along with the buffer.
I smell smoke and mirrors.
That's why. There's smoke and mirrors, sir. Because some residents don't want 75 feet. And what are you going to do with the 75 feet? Who's going to own it and who's going to maintain it?
That's your problem. What is the standard lot size on Colonial?
75 by 150 in this subdivision.
It could be 75 if that did become residential, correct?
Correct.
It wouldn't be standard with the neighborhood.
The neighborhood is 75 anywhere between...
About 150?
No, then the frontage on the neighborhood is anywhere between 65 and 80.
Right.
So we're 75...
The depth is what?
And the depth is 150. Well, not all of them. Across the street, some of them are deeper than 150, some of them are shallower, depending on the closer ones or deeper.
The point is, you're leaving these people vulnerable. All they... All I've asked for, all they want, is a 75-foot buffer. If you give them 150, that's two acres, that they can come back and ask for commercial[1656.73]
Okay, I just want to ask every member of this council why they think 150 feet is better than 75.
We already talked about this. We don't agree on it.
No, I'd just like to hear. I'd like you to tell the residents.
I've already told you why many times.
Well, can you say it again?
The depth of a residential lot in the subdivision is 75 by 150.
If the residents don't want it, if the residents want the green space, the 75 feet,
why are you demanding 150? I smell smoke and mirrors.
That's no smoke and mirrors.
There's smoke and mirrors, sir. There are smoke and mirrors.
Because some residents don't want 75 feet, and what are you going to do with the 75 feet? Who's going to own it, and who's going to maintain it?
That's your problem.
What is the standard lot size on Colonial?
75 by 150 in this subdivision.
It could be 75 if that did become residential, correct?
Correct.
It wouldn't be standard with the neighborhood.
The neighborhood is 75 anywhere between...
About 150?
No, then the frontage on the neighborhood is anywhere between 65 and 80.
Right.
So, we're 75.
The depth is what?
And the depth is 150. Well, not all of them. Across the street, some of them are deeper than 150, some of them are shallower, depending on the closer ones or deeper.
The point is, you're leaving these people vulnerable. All I've asked for, all they want is a 75-foot buffer. If you give them 150, that's two acres, that they can come back and ask for commercial at any point with any council, any mayor, and you are leaving those residents vulnerable to the whims of developers. That's all I'm saying.
We can add the amendment right now.
And so, you care about the people of this community. You need to do what's right.
You are right.
We are.
And it should be advertised correctly. It should go back to planning and zoning. The development agreement should be reworked and fixed. It shouldn't be on the fly at 10:45 PM on something that has been so dear and dear and is precious to this community that it has to be done correctly.
Mr. DeCody, you can vote. We can vote on this tonight, and you can get your vote. There's going to be people suing. I'm not making this up.
I'm not afraid of a lawsuit.
I'm not making this up. People have come knocked on my door, but we could put it to bed if you just do the 75 feet. That's all the residents want. 75 feet.
We can't...
Why not? Why? Why?
Because I don't need to give up two acres, first of all, of 15 acres of commercial.
Nobody's asking you to.
You're asking me for 75 feet.
Well, 150 is more.
Because I can put residential across from the houses that are there. That's the best buffer they can have.
So, it's all about you and your development. It's not about the residents.
No, that's the best buffer that they can have.
That's your opinion?
No, that's not what they want. That's your opinion.
Who is "they"?
The people that live at the end with the commercial.
There's seven of them.
They deserve what everyone else has.
I know them all.
I do, too.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. DeCody, I'm not saying that's a bad idea, what you're proposing, but the development agreement as it presently stands says, okay, now you want to do these residences right here on this proposed Lot 3. That's great. But then for the rest of Colonial Club Drive, you signed this agreement. You're going to be facing in. You're going to have a 75-foot buffer zone with walkways and ponds.
That's on the 40 acres.
I know.
This is totally different.
This plan is in compliance.
Yes, I know that. Is that what the city wants to see as planning, where you have six or seven residences up here, and then... And that's great if you want it. That's great. But is that your plan for the rest of the development? Do you want to put residences all along Colonial Club?
You had asked to talk about renegotiating the development agreement.
So, you don't want to renegotiate the development agreement?
I didn't say that, but not on what you sent me the other day. That was the dumbest thing I've ever seen, but we'll address it.
Compliment received this end. By the way, if it comes to a lawsuit, we'll see.
Okay. Anyway, I got a motion to...
I was going to say, I second the motion.
And she seconded.
I don't even know what the motion is.
Well, we couldn't get to that because you stopped it. He was starting to talk, and then you stopped.
It's the floor amendment. That is a... Nicole, you got the floor amendment you want to read? And I do have a change on the third section.
Okay. Floor amendment for proposed ordinance number 2017-36. Number one, delete the second whereas paragraph in its entirety and insert and lieu thereof the following: Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Harahan at its meeting held on November 1, 2017, recommended denial of said plan of re-subdivision as indicated thereon. Number two, after the second whereas paragraph, insert the following: Whereas the City Council for the City of Harahan overruled the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved the re-subdivision subject to the following condition, subdivision conditions, that a perpetual conventional predial servitude of passage ingress and egress be established by JW Colonial Group LLC, which shall not access from all lots created in this subdivision to a public street. Number two, all engineering, drainage, sewage, building code, and other regulations for the City of Harahan and otherwise applicable by law be adhered to. Whereas the City Council for the City of Harahan deemed the re-subdivision of the subject property to be in the best interest of the City of Harahan at this time, provided that the lots be reconfigured as indicated on a substituted plan of re-subdivision by Ronald Clement PLS dated January 25, 2018, whereby JW Colonial Group LLC shall re-subdivide existing lot A2A, Soniat or Chapitulas Plantation Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, into lots 1 through 6, Colonial Center, Soniat or Chapitulas Plantation Subdivision, in which January 25, 2018, plan is attached hereto and made a part hereof, and shall replace and supersede the existing plan dated August 25, 2017. Whereas the property now known as lots 1 through 6, Colonial Center, under this subdivision, shall be developed in two phases, with lots 1, 2, and 3 constituting Phase 1 and containing 8.3654 acres, and Phase 2 consisting of lots 4 and 5, and consisting... I mean, containing... Wait, consisting of lots 4, 5, and 6, containing 6.7510 acres. Number three, renumber sections 2, 3, and 4 to sections 4, 5, and 6 respectively. Let's see. Number one, insert a new section 1, 2, and 3 to read as follows. Section 1, the plan of re-subdivision of Lot A2A, Soniat or Chapitulas Plantation Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Ronald Clement PLS dated January 25, 2018, re-subdividing Lot A2A into lots 1 through 6, Colonial Center, Soniat or Chapitulas Plantation Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, and the same is hereby approved. Section 2, that the plan of subdivision approved hereby shall be subject to the following conditions: That a perpetual conventional predial servitude of passage ingress and egress be established by JW Colonial Group LLC, which shall provide access from all lots created in this subdivision to a public street. All engineering, drainage, sewage, building code, and other regulations for the City of Harahan and otherwise applicable by law be adhered to. Section 3, the property now known as lots 1 through 6, Colonial Center, under this subdivision, shall be developed in two phases, with lots 1, 2, and 3 constituting Phase 1 and containing 8.3654 acres, and Phase 2 consisting of lots 4, 5, and 6, containing 6.7510 acres. Number 2, and new section 6, change the word on to in. Number 3, insert a new section 7 to read as follows. Section 7, should any provision of this ordinance be declared invalid or unenforceable by final judgment of a court of competent jurisdiction, such declaration shall not affect those provisions hereof that may be given effect without the invalid or unenforceable provision.
So, vote on that, then I'll have another amendment to that.
I'd like to take a recess until the city attorney, if you don't mind.
I don't know where... I don't understand number 6.
I'll take a five-minute recess.
The meeting is now resuming.
Okay, so, on that, first floor amendment. Go to vote on first floor amendment.
We have a motion to amend the ordinance as read into the record by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have four yays, one nay. Amendment?
Then I have a...
Is accepted.
I'd like a motion to make another amendment on the floor amendment. On the first page, the whereas the property now known as lots 1 through 6, Colonial Center, under this subdivision, shall be developed in two phases, with lots 1, 2, and 3 consisting Phase 1 and containing 8.3654 acres, and Phase 2 consisting of lots 4, 5, and 6, containing 6.7510 acres. I'd like that to read lots 1, 2, 4, and 5, consistent Phase 1 at 10.2878 acres, and Phase 2, 10.2878. And Lot 2, I mean, Phase 2 would be Lot 3 and 6 at 4.8286 acres. 4.8286. And that's going to be the same on the second page, section 3. And that's that amendment. I'm waiting on one more amendment from Mr. Bures, and so...
You had a reduced writing, the ones that you just read.
Sure. Okay, I get that.
So, while we're waiting, I just want to say one more thing. Never in negotiations do people, developers, give people more than they ask for. You've got to ask yourself, why are they doing this? This stinks to high heaven.
He already explained why. You can build houses on that property.
You never said.
Yes, please. And we agreed to give you additional commercial to equal whatever you gave us in a buffer. So, there's something really wrong with this. It's wrong to the residents to keep them in limbo. Tim Bodie, you said, I've made a mistake. I am going to work hard to correct this. Well, sir, you are not correcting it. You are making it worse. And when it comes back to bite you, I will be here to remind you.
So, I had a motion for those changes, and seconded by Karen.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston for the changes that he read into the record and presented to the city clerk by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have four yays, one nay.
And I'm going to have one more amendment.
Can you read my hand?
I probably can. I need my pen back, too, please. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Last amendment I have would be to add section 8, which is that Lot 3 of the re-subdivision plan shall be restricted to residential use as described in section 5 of the development agreement for retail shopping center and additional acreage within the city of Harahan. Can you read the rest?
Append it to.
Append it to ordinance number 1777.
I have a motion as read and written by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have four yays, one nay. Motion to amend passes. I think...
You need to vote on the motion as amended, don't you?
No, we need to vote on the amendment.
You need to vote on the ordinance as amended.
What I would... I understand, Mr. DeCody. I would ask this board, with all these amendments and all these changes, to defer this vote, even if it's amended, so that it can go to the public, and so the public can see it. I think there is no transparency of what's going on. This is the largest undeveloped parcel on the east bank of Jefferson Parish, and we're amending on the fly. Amendments that are written by the developer, basically, and telling us what they want and being handed in, and at 11 o'clock at night.
I know I'm...
I just think it should be deferred and let it sit.
I met with them. I met with them. Other council members met with them. It's not what they want. It's what we suggested to them to try and make this work. It wasn't them telling us, oh, this is what you're getting, and we said, oh, yeah, we're going to take it. No. We told them what we wanted to do, and they worked with us.
So, y'all met with them, and you agreed, and that's great, but I think the public needs to do it. I think they need to view what you agreed to with the developers, don't you?
Needs to be added.
I mean, if everybody met with them, the only people who didn't meet with them apparently is the public, because they didn't get to see any of the negotiations. They didn't get to have a word in.
I'd like to call for the vote, please, since it's 11 o'clock.
Can I just say, just one thing real fast? Just a couple of things I wanted to couple points. For the longest time I've heard, we need to put residents on there. We need to put residents on there. We need to put residents on there. So, now we got a spot to make it residential. Now, now...
That's it.
Now, nobody wants it. No way have I ever introduced... I know I've been accused of introducing the 150-foot setback. That never came from me. I was actually out of town when I actually got that plan back. So, I met with all the councilmen and found out each one on how they felt. And then I've heard the concern that while my property, our property value is going to decrease. Well, if you build an equal lot of an equal size with a 225-foot buffer, and somebody builds a mansion right across the street from my house, I'm pretty positive my property value is not going to increase. And now, also, instead of a flat buffer...
It's going to increase.
Huh?
It's not going to decrease, you meant.
I mean, my property value is not going to decrease. It's going to increase. Now, you've got property taxes coming off that property instead of just a piece of parcel that's sitting there doing nothing, that ultimately would cost the city money, because now the city's going to, in some way, be responsible to take care of it. And then we've heard, well, it's going to be odd, because you will have a big buffer, and then you'll have five, six, seven houses of where it is, but there will be a sidewalk and an entrance coming down the highway to that property. I mean, it's... I know what I've met with Councilman Bennett, and I'm telling her that I want to do what's right. I don't see how this is wrong. I'm just, I don't...
But if you got to see this before you mull it over, shouldn't the public get to view it at least for a month to look at it before the vote?
I mean, the public has come to me and said that we want a buffer.
But don't let them agree.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
We're giving them months of buffer.
So, do you agree?
Mayor, that floor amendment was just presented to us. It was discussed.
Exactly. It needs to be...
So, I just want you to clarify. You're like, oh, saying we receive this and everything else.
Well, you discussed, but you discussed.
They're doing this at the request of the citizens that are asking for this. I mean, how much more can they do? Well, one is follow the zoning law with the advertisement correctly. That, I think, is minimal. I asked this question to Mr. Bures. It's a 15-acre parcel, one designated lot, whether they cut it into six, which originally has it all the way up with a 5-foot setback. So, is that really what the citizens want on Colonial, or they're willing to forego and push it back at the request of some of the citizens that are asking for this? So, I mean...
What citizens ask for, Karen?
I told you, Sue. Remember, I told you this. I didn't personally speak to the eight that are on there.
You, for one, and also people you talked to, you said they requested 75-foot buffer. We're giving them 150.
You're giving them 225.
Why?
I'm a sensible, I'm better.
This is my vision. This is why I asked for the 75 feet from Jefferson Highway to where the ingress at Colonial Country Club. You could have a walking path, a bike path. It connects the north side to the south side to the river. I live on Colonial. I see people walking and riding their bikes every day. It would be... That would raise our property taxes all over the community, because we would then have this path that people could use. Kids could learn how to ride bikes. Mothers could push children in strollers. That's the reason I want it. I want it for the whole community, not just for the residents that live at that end. And for y'all to keep saying that this is what the residents want, this is not what the residents want. This is not what they asked for, and I don't know where you all get this information. It was Tim Bodie's idea. I was sitting at the table. I heard him say it.
That's it.
All right.
You heard me say... Wait. Phil said, I wouldn't mind residential, Dad, but you heard me say that?
You brought it up. It was your idea.
I think with all the amendments, we should open to address the council.
I'll call for the vote, please. Do you have a second?
Second.
Wait. I think we should address the council with it again. Can we, since we made all these amendments so that people can see?
There was a motion for the vote, and it was second.
No. There's a motion on the floor to call for the vote.
Second.
You don't... If you don't mind, I'm just asking due deference. If we don't even defer it, that...
There's a motion on the floor to call for the vote.
If we don't defer it for a month...
So, what are you afraid of, Dana, that you don't want to hear what the residents have to say?
Sue, I'm not afraid of anything.
Well, then, why can't we hear them?
Why don't you let somebody get mine?
The mayor usually open up, address the council after we've already asked the council.
Well, she's... I think this is an important issue.
What's the standard? What's the standard?
This is a...
Do we do that?
No, we did it today.
What do you do?
Yes, we did it today.
So, we can talk about a situation, you close it, and you reopen it?
This is significant. We can reopen it.
It's 11 o'clock.
We amend the agenda. We amended it three times tonight. Why can't we amend it again?
Yeah, let's just beat the dead horse.
Yeah, let's do.
Well, I think it's significantly amended.
I'm afraid.
And I think we should be able to have, open to address the council on it.
Well, listen, it's not my decision. I have a motion on the floor to call for the vote. There's a second. There's four other council members here. What do you guys want to do?
I was in the middle of speaking.
I'm ready to call for the vote.
Just because you speak over someone and say, motion, 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 doesn't mean you have the floor.
Please, speak over people.
So, I would like to open to address the council. Please, anyone who would like to address the council and speak to this ordinance with the amendments. Anybody wishes?
No.
Okay, then we will close it.
Can we call for the vote?
That was so painful.
It was.
We have a motion to call for the vote to pass the ordinance as amended. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Yea.
We have four yays, one nays. Ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. DeCody. Congratulations.
Mr. DeCody, let me tell you, there's one concern up here that has, Sue Bennett made to me that I'm very concerned about, and I want never for you guys to come ask for that Lot 3 to be rezoned commercial. Never.
You got it. You got it.
You got that in writing. He promised.
He promised.
It's ridiculous, Tim.
He promised.
He doesn't have to come back and ask for it.
No.
It is zoned commercial.
That's right.
It will always be zoned commercial.
So, good job. Good job. Good job, council. We always appear the citizens that we are here for.
Thank you so much.
That was a foolproof...
Thank you.
No, look, I got a...
Thank you.
No, no.
Section 8, which you're writing, made a residential?
Well, it restricts it on the use, but, you know, and...
Restricted use.
But that's not a match. And I can almost guarantee that after we're all passed away,[1790.52]
And, and I can almost guarantee that after we're all passed away, there will be so many problems out there.
I can't hear you, Bill.
All right. All right. Ordinance Number 1841, which was previously proposed, ordinance Number 2017-37, which was vetoed on January 5th of 2018. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman Johnston. This is an ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018, for the City of Harrahann, Louisiana.
I'd like to just pull my veto out and read it into the record. Let me just look for it, please.
I have it. You need it?
Do you have it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, here it is. I think I have it, yes. Before we open to public hearing. Before we open to public hearing, I'd like to read why I vetoed this proposed ordinance. Ordinance Number 1841, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018, for the City of Harrahann, is hereby vetoed for the following reasons. RS 391305F, which authorizes a governing authority to make amendments to a proposed budget, was amended by Act 217 of the 2017 Regular Session to exclude Larson Act municipalities. Thus, the council is not authorized to make the amendments to the mayor's proposed budget prior to adoption. Under the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act, the governing authority may amend the chief executive or administrative officer's proposed budget, if that's not a Larson Act city, prior to voting on the adopted budget or reject that budget. However, the governing authority may not amend a line item in a chief executive or administrative officer's proposed budget to intentionally provide less than a full fiscal year of funding for a line item in the budget. The line items which were decreased by the council related to known expenses and signed contracts which required the, to, which are required to run the city. LARS 391305 does not allow a budget to fund for only a portion of a year. The city's contractual obligations must be met, resulting in an actual deficit for the year 2018, rather than the 1,848 net surplus which the council adopted budget shows. Per LARS 391315, there are ramifications to any public official or officer charged with the responsibility of planning, adopting, amending, and implementing a budget who, so knowingly or intentionally, where the expenditures exceed the funds available. Since the actual expenditures needed to run the city would exceed the funds available, any public official or officer could be found guilty of malfeasance of office and subject to the penalties contained within the criminal statute. Since the amendments made by the council in 2017 returned the city to a deficit for the year ending 2017, the city must now make plans to eradicate this newly created deficit. The council's meager and incorrectly calculated 1,848 net surplus is not sufficient plan. The mayor's original proposed budget provided a surplus of $55,554 for the year. Under the Louisiana Government Budget Act, a political subdivision with a total proposed expenditures of $500,000 or more from the general fund and any special revenue funds must give the public an opportunity to practice in the budgetary process. Notice all, notice shall be published at least 10 days prior to the date of the first public hearing and no later than 15 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Under LARS 391305, the chief executive or administrative officer of the political subdivision must prepare a proposed budget and submit it into the, to the governing authority. After a period of public inspection, the governing authority must hold at least one public hearing on the proposed budget. Then, under LARS 391309, the governing authority is required to adopt a budget that contains the same information as the required LARS 391305C for the proposed budget. The council's changes, which consisted of 78 line items, were not provided to this administration until the morning of the special council meeting held on December 21st, 2017, and six additional changes were stated at the meeting that night. Therefore, the public hearing required was not met. Thank you. Ms. Judy, do you need the copy? So I was asking you to put that into the minutes. Thank you. The public hearing is now open for this ordinance. If there's no one here to speak, we will now close the public hearing. Council discussion? If there's no council discussion, we can proceed with the vote. You're gonna be voting for the ordinance. This, too, needs a supermajority. Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one nay. Ordinance override is overruled.
Next is Proposed Ordinance Number 2017-38.
Nicole, I'm gonna withdraw this ordinance, please.
Next is Proposed Ordinance Number 2017-39. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman.
I'll second.
Bodie. This is an ordinance amending ordinance Number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the City of Harrahann, Louisiana, for the Police Department.
I'm gonna make a motion to defer this to February. The chief and I, Ms. Whittle, were kind of going a few, over a few things with the new update to the in-code system economy. A little difficult to interpret the revenues and expenditures. That's why I didn't complete the body, so I didn't have the information. So I make a motion to defer until the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to defer this ordinance to the next meeting by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Okay. And 20, Proposed Ordinance 2017-40 was taken up at the beginning of the agenda. So we're on 41. Let's see, Proposed Ordinance Number 2017-41. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman. This is amending the 2017 budget. An ordinance amending ordinance Number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the City of Harrahann, Louisiana.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address the council? If there's no one wishing to address the council, we will now close, address the council. Council discussion?
Let me go first. The reason I withdrew my Civil Service Department ordinance is because I can make those changes within the 2017 budget. So this is what I would like to propose. On page 18. Let everybody get there. Should be general fund, non-departmental and administrative.
Wait, 18, what?
I believe it's 18. Yes, it's 18.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody there? Okay. Legal fees, line 53, item number 10, excuse me.
Hold on, I'm not there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So line 53, line number 010-4-110-40820, legal fees and lawsuits. I would like to reduce that line by $1,200 and move those funds to page 7, under the Civil Service Department Fund. Line 10, which is salaries, line number.
What page?
Sorry. It says 7 on the bottom. It's the general fund for the Civil Service Department.
I thought you said page 21, was it?
No, page 7. That's what it has on here.
All right, page 7.
Hold on.
Not page 7.
Sewer fund.
Okay. Well, I have a 7 here, but it does say 21 here. It's odd that I had 2. This says page 7, but this does say 21. So is it 21?
It is 21?
Okay.
And what are we doing on 21?
So on the salary line, line 10, line number 010-4-01, excuse me, let me repeat that. Line 10, item number 010-4-120-49000. I apologize, it's line 11. I'm sorry, they both said salaries.
Right.
Let me go back. Line 11, under wages and benefits, salaries, other subcontractors, line number 010-4-120-49100. Adopted budget was 2,400. I would like to increase that to the 3,600. That's the 1,200 from the legal fees and adding the, to making the total 3,600.
And the intent of that is to declare what the intent is, that's approval of the increase in salary?
Is to pay Ms. Whittle the increase that the Civil Service Board granted her a raise back in July.
Is the secretary?
To pay this, the Civil Service Board's secretary, who received a raise in July of 2017, an increase of $200 a month. So this would be July, August, September, October, November, December, six months at $200 a month is $1,200. So we are increasing her salary line from 24 to 36 for the year 2017. Is that, is that enough clarification?
Did you write that down for?
And who's second?
Reduce it in writing for?
I can, I can do it.
Your proposal, that is 286, I think, you want it to go to decreasing to 27?
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll do it real quick, yes. Mm-hmm, no problem.
The increase was July 27?
All right. It would be 27, 468. Is that what you got?
Yeah.
Okay. 468. Reducing it by $1,200, but taking that $1,200 and moving it to the civil service salary, other subcontractor line.
Linda, if you write it for Carrie, you can submit it to Nicole, I guess, if you, is that?
I think it's, Nicole, will you have it correct?
Is it reduced to writing, like we said?
I have it here. I'm on it, I'm on it.
27, 468.
That's a total on page 18.
And then the new line will be from, will be 3,600.
Yeah.
So I have a motion to amend.
Second.
Second by Johnston.
Wait, I have a motion by Carrie Wheeler to amend as read and written, and seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor of the amendment?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay. Can I talk about?
Ms., you can have a point of order.
I, I wanna just talk about this. I just think the public needs to know that even though the Civil Service Board recommended this, that this, this board is not required to give this, this increase. It's a 50% increase. Ms. Whittle, has, nothing against Ms. Whittle, she's been doing this for three years. Judy Johnson, on the other hand, has been doing it for 15 years. She does four meetings a month. Ms. Whittle does one sometimes. I'm, I'm not sure how many meetings that they had this year.
That's rude.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I don't know, but it's not every month like Ms. Judy has to do. Ms. Judy, our meetings, as you know, go very long. It's very involved. She spends a lot of hours, 15 years, no raise. Not only did she not get a raise, this council reduced her salary line by, went from 3,000 to 1,000. So I, I don't really know, I don't understand this. I don't think it's appropriate. I can't, you know.
Well, Sue, Mr. Credo, the attorney for the Civil Service Board is here. Mr. Credo, can you address Sue's question, please?
My name is Keith Credo, and I am the attorney for the Civil Service Board. There's a lot of confusion, and I understand it, but there's an error when you say you don't really have to do this, because the Civil Service Board did it. It's an odd animal, so let me explain, if I can, the best I can. The Civil Service Board is a state board. Even though it exists within the City of Harrahann for the Harrahann Police Department, it's created by a state statute and is a state board. It's not a Harrahann board. City of Harrahann doesn't employ the secretary for the Civil Service Board.
I understand all that, Mr. Credo, but I got an email from Mr. Bures, and it stated in the email that this board is not required to approve this raise.
And, and Mr. Bures and I have had that discussion, and we respectfully disagree with each other, but as a councilman for the city, there is a mandamus pending to order the city to pay state fees. I don't wanna go forward with that. I really don't. It's $1,200.
You think that's fair to the other employees of the city?
Yes, ma'am, because it's not, she's not an employee of the city. She's an employee of the state.
Well, okay.
And the state has a right to give raises to its employees whenever it wants to.
All right, okay, I understand. I have a question for Ms. Lulu. Ms. Lulu, this, we have this whole civil service as a separate department under, under the general fund. My opinion is that the, any fees for civil service should be allocated proportionately to fire and police, because they're the ones who have the civil service employees. Instead, it comes out of the mayor's administrative budget under the general fund. Is there any way we could change that and do those line items proportionately based on, you know, what percentage of the budget the police and fire have? Because this, in essence, is giving a, a police department employee a raise. The city has, it is, Mr. Credo?
No, ma'am, it's, it's giving a state employee of the state's civil service board.
You can look at it any way you want. I disagree.
No, ma'am, it's, it's a law.
I disagree.
I don't look at it. It's a state statute. The state examiner has weighed in.
So is there any way that we can do that? That we could move that and create line items for police and fire and have that as an expense to those departments? Because I, to me, it makes sense.
Yes, actually, the auditors thought that as well, that there could be an allocation at year-end, divide it up however we wanted to do it, if it was based upon the number of employees or based upon actually what the meetings were about.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this year, the meetings all seem to be about the weather, so.
So would, would that require council approval to make that change, or could we just do that as an accounting procedure?
Well, the auditors could do it if they wanted to.
Okay, good. All right, that's all I'm, thank you.
Mr. Bures, if you don't just, would you just please tell us what other choices did the Civil Service Board have as far as this position?
State law provides that the Civil Service Board can either appoint one of its members as a secretary, assign the duties to the city clerk, or employ someone at a salary of, what is it, Keith? Not more than $750 a month?
Up to $750 a month, right.
So, but the, if they hire a secretary and, and assign a salary, the salary has to be approved by the governing authority of the City of Harrahann, so.
It has to be approved.
Yes, it has to be approved by the governing authority of the City of Harrahann. So if, if, you know, I don't wanna get into speculation about what, what other, what else could happen, but that's what the state law requires, correct?
It is, that's what the state law says.
It's an unfunded mandate of the State of Louisiana. You have to pay it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Everybody has my cell numbers, so y'all call me.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have a little discussion, not about that, but this whole budget, to be quite honest with you, I'm not voting for it, because I think the mayor overspent,[1685.66] uh, to be quite honest with you, I'm not voting for it because I think the mayor overspent and we're in a deficit because she overspent, not because of anything else that's said. But to go along with that, what can we do in here to move around to put the money in the proper places that was received from outside of the city?
I didn't follow that at all, I'm very sorry.
Jefferson Parish money came to us, we brought it through capital, put it to wherever, I want to make those amendments, whatever the... You understand what I'm saying? Police cars, et cetera, et cetera, that Jefferson Parish gives us money.
The Jefferson Parish money was, Alec, was, it was, when we accepted the money, we accepted it into the Capitol Project Fund and then the car purchases were paid out of the Capitol Project Fund, so those two pieces are over there.
Okay, so everything was done there, we don't have to do anything with the budget on money we received from any, anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, I will state this, the only thing that I'm going to approve in this budget is the allocation for Ms. Whittle's salary increase. So if I need to separate it out, then I will.
Can I?
So, because I think there's some issues with some revenue too that wasn't, that we didn't see in here either.
I was just trying to bring that up because I know in, in the past, the police gotten, received money and it wasn't put to their budget and they ended up coming up short. I'm just making sure that's not going to happen again.
No, it was all in capital.
How do we advertise a budget to bring the seventeen budget into alignment? And then only, let me clarify, it suggests that you're only suggesting pass two lines?
That was my suggestion.
Those the two lines?
So again, if that cannot be done, then I can easily bring up my ordinance again for civil service to do specifically that. But I can bring it up again. I mean, it'll have to be at a later meeting.
I would like to motion... I would like to motion to just vote on the amendment that Carrie Wheeler just brought up.
Second.
I, I have a question posed by the, to the city council prior to the motion.
So, Mr. Bures, let me ask you this question, and we discussed this today, there were other line items that were paid out of this Civil Service Board that were no funds allocated. Okay, so, Mr. Credo himself and the court reporter. So... Okay, and that's, and that's fine, I mean, I think you saw my, my emails, so it's funny that he can be made whole, nothing against Mr. Credo, and the court reporter can be made whole, which amounts total almost ten-thousand dollars, but we're asking for twelve-hundred dollars, so why can't, those lines, those people have already been paid, there was no money allocated at all for those lines, but yet they have been paid, so there's already negative spending in that line. So why can't Ms. Whittle be paid?
Because the state statute...
You know, because the state statute specifically says that to approve the salary requires the action of the governing authority, it doesn't say that about Mr. Credo. Every state board, every, every board is entitled to legal representation, I can tell you where that's going, a judge is going to look at it and say, if they, if they have to sue over the, you know, their rights under law, we're going to make sure they get paid, they're an obligation, you, you have an obligation, city of Harahan, to pay for the fire and police civil service board.
So we can't pay Ms. Whittle and do a budget amendment at a later time?
Look, I didn't write this law, I'm telling you, and all it says is that you have to approve it. Now, what you've done is you've moved the money around, and that's why I had you put in the language about the intent. The law is not clear as to whether the approval can be done, has to be done by resol, by ordinance or can be done by resolution. So, you know, maybe you could pass a, a resolution that says we approve the salary and then you can leave the budget issue for a different day?
That's not what the law's meant.
Well, it's not clear that, that the approval is actually a law, so...
Well then we can simplify this. The only amendment that I am going to accept for the 2017 budget is to decrease the legal fee line and offset the salary for Ms. Whittle. If that cannot be done, then I will withdraw my amendments because it was never voted on, it hasn't been voted on yet.
That's correct.
And then I can bring forth my Civil Service Department ordinance in February and then we'll vote on it in March. But I know, like you said, so, I just don't understand how money can be spent with nothing allocated of ten-thousand dollars.
Here's, and, and, and let me tell you how that might work, if it came down to a fight in a court of law. Like you heard tonight from the police chief, there is, and from the mayor, there are certain things that the city is required to do, it, it's, it's, let's call it a mandate, you're, you're required to do certain things and if you don't appropriate money for it, the courts are going to say, we don't care if you didn't appropriate any money for it, we're going to, we're, we're just going to take it out of your, your tax avails. And let me give you an example of it. Some of this stuff that we have to do for the DEQ is an example. My fees, I'm a city officer, there's not any restriction on you, well, you can only pay them if you appropriate money, no, you hire, you have a city attorney, you got to pay him. And the only question about the reasonableness of my bills is going to be addressed by the Louisiana State Bar Association in the fee dispute.
But isn't the mandamus, it states about Mr. Credo's salary, fees and Ms. Whittle's salary?
No, no, look, this is how the mandamus works, a mandamus is an, is a, a request for a judge to issue a writ to command a public official...
Wasn't Ms. Whittle's salary in that mandamus law with Mr. Credo's?
No, you see, he didn't, he didn't plead, he didn't say that the council appro, and that's one of the flaws. It should have read, the council approved the woman's salary on such and such a date, the secretary's salary was approved on such and such a date, the mayor hasn't cut the check. Then the mandamus would lie against the mayor. If it, if it, it could have said and should have said, the council of the city of Harahan has never approved the salary, we sent it over, it's a mandatory state thing, they have to approve it, but they have to name each of the council members, when you, so do a mandamus on appropriation, you have to name each of the council members. There's some case law that questions whether you can mandamus an appropriation, but in this case, let's just cut to the heart of the matter, let's get the appropriation done, the approval done, let's at least get the approval done.
Well, apparently, it seems I can't just single out justice...
Let's, let's just get the approval done, if we get the approval done, then you've approved the salary, you didn't allocate any money, the mayor can go out and get the money from any account that she can because she's, she's going to be subject to a mandamus to get it. The judge is not going to care what you appropriated, he's just going to say, Civil Service Board said she gets paid so much, you all approved it, great. You didn't appropriate any money, mayor, wherever you take it from, that's great, because you'll, then you'll be complying with state law, same way that Credo got paid. So, if you want to cut...
Keith, are you still there?
I'm here.
Are you happy with a resolution?
I'm happy with the resolution.
You happy with a resolution?
I, I would be happy with the resolution because we've already got the commitment from the mayor that once the resolution passes, the check is going to be cut. Isn't that what I saw in the email today?
That's the, that's the whole objective.
Mayor, you don't have any objection to that, do you?
I think we delved on this last time. How much did we actually spend trying to do this for twelve-hundred dollars?
You know, that's a, that's a really great question. It, it cost me two hours of legal research today just to answer the questions from the council. You know, I got blindsided by this lawsuit, I would have been happy to do the two hours of legal research to avoid the lawsuit. It's like, come on, guys, I mean, this is like...
Mr. Bures, I think the Civil Service Board mailed the city notice about that if they didn't settle up this bill, they were going to file, so there was an intent to file.
Let, let, let me tell you, Councilman Wheeler, Councilman...
Is that not correct? So I'm saying blindsided, I mean, don't you think that's a little...
It's...
Exaggerating a bit?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't, usually when I'm involved in litigation, I send the lawyer, a co, look, I got to tell you, Keith, and Keith and I get along, get along famously. I was truly blindsided by this, I never got any indication that they were thinking of...
We have a change of tape.
So, a week after the mandamus was filed and our guest service was made on the city, Mr. Credo received a check for eighty-four-hundred dollars.
I think that was in the works for...
Budget, and it looks like there was something paid out of legal fees lawsuit, that there was nothing allocated that says twenty-four-seventy-five. So I would assume that the eighty-four was in addition to the twenty-four, so now we're at, what is that, eleven-eight?
He's at thirteen-six-sixteen right now, Mr. Credo.
Okay, then we had to pay a court reporter fifteen-hundred dollars, that's what I was told.
That, that's a necessary expense.
Okay, but, but, but they're asking how much it costs.
Yeah.
So we're at maybe potentially fifteen-thousand dollars. If I believe the last month's meeting, we asked Chief St. Seer and also Chief Walker exactly how much would it have cost if you would have just paid the gentleman, and I believe St. Seer said like fifteen-hundred dollars, I, I don't want to quote, and Chief yours was like six. So yeah, but Gil, a resolution's not going to get Ms. Whittle paid, so you know what? I will just have to bring forth my budget amendment and do it the right way, because I am not going to adopt any of these other changes in 2017.
Mayor, did I understand that you are committed to writing the check on the basis of a resolution?
If, if, I, I'm, I'll go out on a limb and say that, that would be, a resolution by the council would be an approval of the Civil Service Board's increase in the salary.
So you will write the check?
But there's no funds allocated to pay her, she's not going to pay her.
But it's, it's...
Where's my resolution?
If you want to do a by ordinance, hold it up, that's great.
No, no, wait, please make... Mr. Credo, I appreciate your time here, we're going to talk about this till we're blue in the face and nothing's going to get resolved. I am going to withdraw the amendments I just requested, I will bring forth another Civil Service Board amendment...
Please don't.
To specifically, because I'm not going to adopt any of the other changes.
Can I, well, but, but wait, wait, may I, may I just say one thing? I understand that you suggested changes, there was a motion to vote on just those changes...
Right.
That was seconded, that if approved, would then make those changes.
Just those changes.
At that point, y'all can stop debating everything else you want.
But I believe she said that we couldn't do just that.
Well, wait, no, there's a motion and a second and you vote on it and you do it and you're the council, so you can do it.
Yeah, but they haven't voted on the ordinance as amended.
As a total, as amended.
The ordinance as, and I believe...
So, you know, Mr. Credo, I have...
Why don't you divide, why don't you do this, why don't you divide, why don't you divide the question, I move to divide the question, and, and...
Can she call back her ordinance from the floor?
Did she withdraw, if she withdrew it, she can't call it back. If she laid it on the table, she can call it back at the same meeting.
Okay, then I'll just bring it up next month.
Now, you see, now two lawyers are going to have to go get a continuance.
Mr. Credo, I'm looking for a document, I'm looking for a document, I'm looking, I, I get chastised...
She withdrew, can I, can I bring it back up?
But wait, I get chastised, I've got the floor right now.
It's an ordinance, that's going on the first reading again.
Whether, I'm just supposed to pay you, but I'm going to get chastised in the same breath that there was no money allocated, so how dare that I paid you? So, so when you start using reasonableness and logic and weighing the quandary that I've been put in repeatedly for everything in this city, is I have an officer of the state that needs to get paid, I don't have a choice.
Okay, can I make a suggestion, just, I, I know this is out of line, but can I please make a suggestion? If by unanimous consent, you could add to your agenda a resolution to make the payment, you, if by unanimous vote, y'all could do that, at which point, if it passes, then the mayor could cut a check, and then there's no reason for this to even come up with your next budget discussion, because it will be cut before the February meeting.
I have a question for you anyway, you're doing this, she didn't withdraw the ordinance, she withdrew her amendment.
She withdrew her ordinance.
Amendment.
Her first ordinance.
No, it's...
She had her ordinance, just about tracing.
Okay, okay, you were going to bring it back, okay, I got you, you threw me off for a second.
Yeah, she had no...
So if y'all could get a unanimous resolution in and the check cut by next month, nobody has to even talk about this anymore, and you're absolutely right, it is twelve-hundred dollars. I, I will tell you, I no-charged two-thousand dollars of November billing, because it's embarrassing to have to keep billing for doing the same thing. My interest here is just to get this done. So, yeah, my mandamus...
So how do we do it, how do we do the resolution?
Make a resolution.
Do a resolution.
First of all, I think I am going to withdraw my amendments that I just made to the 2017 budget, moving those lines. From legal fees from non-administrative to civil service.
Right. And, okay.
Okay, that's the first thing that needs to be done, can I get a second?
Don't we need it in writing, a resolution?
Somebody, you want to run?
Huh?
Who writes fast?
I'll write it, give me a computer, I'll type it right now.
You got it.
Let me, let me boot it up.
Why can't we just call, put it in the record and put it in the minutes?
I, I, I think that would be acceptable, frankly, I'm so sick of dealing with it.
What would you like for me?
Resolution to authorize the payment of the secretary for the ci, civil service board.
Resolution.
As voted.
So the city of Harahan...
As approved by the Civil Service Board.
Hereby approves.
Approved by that board.
Pay increase to the Civil Service Secretary, as approved.
Wait, hold on.
And then you have a resolution and you can write the check and this will be done. No more legal fees, no more costs.
But you understand the pain.
Oh, but yes ma'am.
The city of Harahan...
I, I, I've been sitting here all night, I understand.
It's pretty miraculous.
Proposed resolution.
All right, Gil, how does this?
Okay, I'll move to introduce a resolution.
We have a motion to...
Wait, you said it was twenty-eighteen-one, there's two ordinances that are off, I think it's a resolution, because it's the same numbers.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to add resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-one by Carrie Wheeler, seconded by...
Second.
Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have zero, five yea, zero nays, amending the agenda, would you like to amend the agenda to edit now?
Please, yes.
I have a motion by Carrie Wheeler to amend the agenda right now, I should have added that prior, sorry, seconded by Ms. Benton, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays, motion passes, please introduce the ordinance.
Resolution.
A resolution, so just, so the city of Harahan hereby approves the pay increase to the Civil Service Board Secretary granted by the Civil Service Board.
Year 2017.
Year 2017.
Effective July first, 2017. Is that good?
Yes ma'am.
Do I need to state what it was to what it is now?
Why don't you? Yes.
So, okay, city of Harahan hereby approves the pay increase to the Civil Service Board Secretary granted by the Civil Service Board effective July first, 2017.
From two-hundred to four-hundred.
From two-hundred dollars a month to four-hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Can't get any more clearer than that.
Second.
Would you please hand that to Madam Clark? No, don't rewind.
I got a second.
I have a motion to proceed with the vote to pass the ordinance twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-one by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays, motion passes. We are now on proposed ordinance twenty-seventeen-dash-forty-one.
Right, it's still on forty-one, yeah. So...
So I have withdrawn, well, she's got it right, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to... Well, I, I'm withdrawing my amendments to the 2017 budget from the legal fees non-administrative to the civil service salary increase. Motion to withdraw the amendments.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler to withdraw her amendments to twenty-seventeen-dash-forty-one by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by...
Second.
Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays, motion passes, any further discussion?
No more discussion.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all those in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have one yea, four nays, ordinance fails.
All right, proposed ordinance number twenty-seventeen-dash-forty-two.
No, that was withdrawn.
I'm just kidding, yeah, ordinances for introduction, um, psych. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton, this is a proposed ordinance number twenty-eighteen-dash-one, an ordinance relating to asphalt repairs around the city of Harahan to be performed during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2018. And, proposed ordinance number twenty-eighteen-dash-two, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and second, well, an ordinance relating to drainage maintenance around the city of Harahan to be performed during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2018. Old Business, Civil Service Board appointment.
Uh, I know, I haven't reached out because I know who, who was it up here last meeting said that they knew some other names that were going to be...
Well, um, yeah, I had, I had somebody that was interested, I spoke to Mr. Credo about it, he's going to give me the contact information, the Loyola, and I guess since in light of unfortunately Mr. Lamont's passing, there could potentially be two spots, so, I guess if we could do a motion to defer...
Okay, look.
There are two spots open, right?
I have a motion to defer, uh, Civil Service Board appointment under Old Business to the next city council meeting by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays, motion, um, is passed.
Yeah, and then we have to add another New Business, remember the chief emailed us that ABO?
Oh, the ABO, yeah.
Yeah, I have that here.
Okay.
After... But number two, Gary Verheid, Vice President of the Harahan Horseshoe Pitchers Association.
My name's Roy Willie. I'm in place of Gary. I'd like to get the council's approval and the administration's approval to move forward with Fobacher Electric.
Did you get... Look into the insurance and present the insurance liability? Did you present that to the... To Stuart or Stu Foley?
I have it here. This is the current year, 2018, our liability insurance. I can certainly give this to the council.
I don't want to take your original from you.
No, no, I got...
You want to email it?
I got two of them here.
Okay, so we can have one.
Sorry.
Thank you. And the other thing is, we had discussed that there's an ordinance that states about drinking alcohol that you can't do...
I know about that.
Right, and that if you so desired...
I'm sorry?
And if you so desired that the city would require you to get a rider, an alcohol rider.
I would coordinate that with Chief of Police. I think that's where we could do that through.
Yeah, actually, it would be an insurance rider for... To drink... To drink alcohol.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Because it would be the same way that it would be an insurance rider on your policy, and that we would... The city would be second. So that if somebody was drinking and left an event for, you know, that you were host... That you were having, and they got into an accident, that's big, but your policy would kick in, and then the city's policy would be in addition to.
Okay. I can... I can certainly address that issue with this company.
Right. And if you need any assistance with that, just let, you know, let us know.
Certainly.
I've got the... Exactly the language probably that would work.
Okay, okay. And, I mean, we'd be more than happy to purchase that even separately.
Right, it would be an additional...
Okay, an additional rider or whatever, you know, expense that would incur, we'd be certainly more than happy to.
And I talked to Stu Foley over the playground, and, you know, the city... It's the city's horseshoe. So it's our responsibility to put lights, et cetera. It was basically about coming up with the exact dollar amount after we fin... Got the final estimate from Mr. Fobacher. I'm not sure that Mr. Fobacher presented it to her.
Uh, he emailed it to both...
Then I've got to say, if I got it...
Stu and yourself.
If I got it, I have overlooked it.
Okay.
I'll be honest.
But, I mean, our association...
I have received a lot.
Uh, we'd be more than happy to either pay them directly as a donation to the city and/or reimburse the city if you want to go in that direction.
So if you'd like, um...
Any expense?
I didn't see... I'll be honest. I did not see the...
He gave, I think, Stu a quote of somewhere between $650 and $700 to put the panel in and wire the lights to the panel.
And the permit.
And then we would get a permit, or either have the city inspect it, or whatever permits would be necessary for Entergy to feed the panel, put a meter in, and either they can bill the association directly for those expenses.
Well, what we'd like to do is, I... I think that would be...
Or reimburse the city.
I think it just goes into the user fee. That's all.
Or I could do that.
I think that's the appropriate way to do it. So if you'd like to meet next week, and we can coordinate it, maybe kind of...
Do I work that through with Stu, Mr. Foley? I'm sorry.
It's probably going to have to be with me. So if we could meet on Tuesday?
Okay.
I believe you have my cell phone.
Just... I could... Give me a time and...
I don't have my calendar.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Can I follow up on...
Call you tomorrow.
Can I follow up on Monday with your secretary or whomever's in the...
Yeah, just call, and we'll coordinate. But we'll do something Tuesday that works.
Okay.
Okay.
But, I mean, can we get authorization to move on this?
I need to get the quote, and if you're going to do a donation, then we just need to probably put something
Okay.
type it up in writing, the donation for the initial expenses, and then we'll settle on the last... That... It was anywhere from $1,215 to $15, something nominal for the... The usage fee or whatever. It was something near the scale, so...
Well, I mean, our first proposal, we offered, I think it was an annual fee of like 500 to play.
Well, like I said, I don't have that number in front of me, but I'm happy to... I think we just need to sit down and finish typing it out and hammering it out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, before we move on, it gets too late. I'd like... Actually, I'd like to motion to bring something on the floor right now, which is to change the date of the February meeting, because the February meeting would be taking place of the week of Mardi Gras, which I know is very hectic down here the whole week. So I think that... Well, I'd like to motion
To what day?
to bring that up, to go to the 22nd, which is the following week.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston to move the February regular City Council meeting from February...
15.
15 to February 22nd. All those in favor? At 7:30, main...
7:30, yes.
7:30 PM time.
Yes.
Can we move it up?
Wheeler, second.
And end it just say, end it early, too? Like change six to five?
Everybody's just used to the time right now.
Okay, yeah, all right. I won't push. All right, I have that motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays.
Does anybody want a motion to add that high content ABO?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
To what?
To add that high content ABO application.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the agenda and add the ABO.
Yeah, that's Wheeler.
It's the ABO.
Yeah.
R&amp;E Jefferson, is that what it is?
Yeah, R&amp;E Jefferson LLC located at 6492 Jefferson Highway.
Okay.
High content.
And Chief, I think you've already emailed saying that everyone that you...
Well, this is the... This is the question that came up to actually talk to Gilbert, because right next to it right now, they have a church that's not in use as a church, but the church still owns it, and is this... It came up a lot ago, but that was when the church was in full force.
There is someone looking at the property.
They were allowed beer.
Their neighbor is looking at buying it, and I'm not sure if it's under contract or not. But I think it may be, but I... I have not been able to do that research.
But the church still owns it, so they can always reopen it.
And that was what I was told originally.
It may be. It may be under contract.
Did you get a copy? Did you see this?
Yeah. When's the last time did it... Yeah, what... But the thing is, it's still a church. So when's the last time was the church in operation? Because there's a...
About a year. About a year.
I'm just going by this, which is saying the suggestion of the Harahan City Attorney.
Just that y'all covered that you don't create a problem for the city.
I just... I don't know if we should just... I... I heard that they were looking at the property to buy it. I don't know if it's under contract, but it very well could be or soon to be under contract.
So do we just defer this until...
But the other... The other ordinance law says within 300 feet, they want high contact packaged liquor.
Right.
If it was beer, probably wouldn't be a problem. It's the high contact packaged liquor that they want.
It just may be better to... To wait.
Okay.
Because the...
Well, I'd like to motion maybe to defer this until next month.
Again, all we do is the background check to make sure that they're compliant.
So we go a little research behind it.
Okay, I have a motion to defer the ABO approval to the February meeting by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays. That ABO is deferred.
Yeah. Now we have new business and mayor pro tem for 2018.
Councilman Johnston?
I'll actually motion for Mr. Bodier to take it this year.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston to place as mayor pro tem, Councilman Bodier, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays.
Congratulations.
Um, yeah. Motion passes. Secretaries report.
No, we got to do address the council.
Oh, address the council. We now have addressed the council.
We have three minutes.
Anyone wishing to? Since no one wishes to address the council, we will now close address the council.
All right, secretaries report for December 2017. Total revenue, $1,778,322.10. The reports.
Let's pay the bills.
All right. Bills paid in December 2017, $681,554.74.
Reports.
Happy Mardi Gras.
Yeah, that's a happy Mardi Gras. Have a safe and happy Mardi Gras.
Happy Valentine's Day.
It's late.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Let's all agree to adjourn. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler to adjourn. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays.